Ask the father that you are our footsteps and have to make good decisions concerning our county. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Got a lot going on today. We had several folks who would ask to come and speak. One particular gentleman who called me first, I'd like to get him in because I know he's trying to get back to Birmingham is Mr. Joel Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert, if you want to come up and speak to the commission. Our commission, this is Ms. Cobb, she's up in Fruithurst, that area, Board of Strains. District four, Mr. Roger Hill, he's would be the commissioner in your district in Arbocucci area.
Yes.
Property.
Okay.
The Ramberg District Commissioner is sick, I think I mentioned that to you. And then you met Mr. Emmett Owens, District two Commissioner. But he has a concern that we've talked about, this is our county engineer.
They're good, how are you?
And I think I forward stuff to you through Terry, I think you're familiar with the site, go ahead.
Sure, we own the property down Arbocucci, I have for a long time, back in the mid eighties. I understand y'all are dealing with this elsewhere in the county, but we had the state and feds and with the help of the county came in a little watershed on the property. And basically since the mid eighties, up until recently, it's been kept up, the dam's been kept up, everything's been bush hogged and all that. Unfortunately, I've been out of state for a couple of years and when I came back, I usually went up here about every other weekend. As soon as I got up here last week or a couple of weeks ago, I noticed it hadn't been cut in quite a while. It's a pretty significant dam, there's now trees growing on it, which as y'all know, kind of impacts the integrity of the dam. One, I was just wanting to come up here, let you guys aware of it and kind of find out what's going on and see if I can get that addressed at some time soon. I've got pictures, y'all probably already know all this stuff already, but you know, I like to document things and someone will hand these out to you. Just so y'all know who I am and can get in touch with me and I've got pictures of the dam and this is your way to it. The database on the dam and when it was last inspected or looked at. But in any event, it's the biggest issue for me is the, I'll bush hog everything around there, spillway, overflow areas and all that. But the dam itself, particularly with the trees growing on it, it's above my pay grade to do. And I'm worried about the integrity of it if it keeps going on over the next few years.
Lee, if you want to address it, but I know that this has been discussed before quite a bit and extensively. And I know that we have some concerns because of issues, but I'll let you address it.
So I mean, everything you're saying is correct and we have not bush hogged and this will be three years now that we have not. The reason that we have not is there, the reservoirs are all sitting on private property. We have no easements to them, we have no right of ways or anything. And so what we had done through Rogers office and USDA had requested some just clarification. Can we expand public money on private property, you know, where's, how do we do all this stuff and it be legal? Because we're not supposed to spend public money on private property. So where does these watersheds fall? And we have not gotten any response from NRCS, USDA, or anybody. We can't get anybody to give us that clarification because we do not have the easements or the right of ways to access it or to be on it. And so we're waiting on that clarification. So that's what, I mean, really, that's where the, that's where the holdup is at the moment and waiting on.
So there's no document, I mean, I was around when it was built, my granddad, sister thought about it, he was the one that agreed to it with the county. At that time, when we were there getting it constructed, he relayed to me that through this project and him allowing that to take place on his property, the county had agreed to maintain that dam for that watershed.
And when you start, some of the contracts, so there's 16 of these total throughout the county. Some of them's got some end dates on them, some of them don't, I can't specifically remember. I know which watershed you're on, but I can't remember details on that. As far as end of the, the, end of the contract.
Here, the contract period.
So when we put all through, you know, put all the contracts through our attorney, that was the response we got was.
One of the things I asked in that document there is any type of records you document, you related to my specific watershed on my property. So I can look at it because I've gone through my granddad's files, can't find anything there. I just know what he told me word of mouth. And I would like to have understanding what my obligations are as well and the states and whoever else is. Because at some point, you know, it is a watershed that collects sediment and needs to be addressed, that needs to be addressed at some point too.
Yeah, and saying that's another big thing on it, at what point does the maintenance quit, you know? Are we, when that pond is full, when it's reached its lifespan and it's full of sediment, you know, is removal of that sediment on the county as well? It's not clarified in any of it. That's all part of what we've asked and haven't gotten any, any help on.
Would y'all have those documents specific to the watershed?
I do have the contract for when it was originally drawn up.
But you have addressed the government agencies and they have been very vague and they will not put anything in writing.
They will not, well, they won't even.
It's not supposed to. I would just like to see this stuff, I mean, I'm just gonna figure out what's going on and what I'm gonna have to pay for.
But the NRCS, they're still conducting the five-year required annual, or not annual, but five-year inspections on them. So they, they are still conducting those.
So this, I'm sorry.
So is, so over the period of time you deserve when they were built?
Yeah.
And so, so they never open them up and let the?
Waters is open, it's fully open, it's just a, it's to hold the floodwater.
Right, but I'm talking about has it ever been let down or has it always been water level?
It's always, well, is it the water level or a lot higher depending on memory? So yeah, it's, it's never been let down since it's been constructed. That's one of the things I'm looking at because you can definitely tell, particularly up the upper end where it gets fed in from the stream. So it's, it's a lot of sediment coming in from clear cuts and everything else that's been going on through the years.
Is there, is there an avenue through the NR, the?
NRCS.
Yeah, too many acronyms in it.
I mean, they're, they're involved in all of it. I mean, they're part of the, they're the agency that does inspection on it and part of the ones we've asked for clarification on.
And one of the biggest things is, is back in the day when all these things were done. Now, it's hard to get workers to even bush hog the right of ways as far as keeping workers. And then the burden of us something that was back 50 years ago to maintain and then it comes up as rules change. You know, we can't go on private property and, and spend money. So, and that's, and that's some of the stuff I guess we need to get somebody to clarify.
Well, I'd even be able, I mean, right now, I just need to cut because if those trees get any bigger.
It's gonna be.
It's gonna be a lot more work for a lot of other people, it's gonna be a lot more expensive. And just for the safety of it as well, I'd be even, I don't know if this is even possible, but if somebody, the county give me an estimate of how much it costs for them to cut it, I would be open to paying that and getting it done.
And you wouldn't have to experience.
But the county, yeah, you still on private property though. I mean, but even us though, we don't, I mean, we didn't cut them when we was cutting them. We had Cusa Valley bunch cut them, so.
I think, I think this body is at a standstill and through our county attorney, trying to protect our, ourselves. Not that we don't want to be a good neighbor, but just trying to protect ourselves, I think that's where we're at. We're kind of at a, we were looking for some input or how this could possibly be and we're not getting any participation. And I think even through Mike Rogers.
Yes, I mean, we.
Yes.
Lee, can, so I see what he's saying about trees on that dam. So if he's looking to get it done, is it okay for him to cut the dam?
Yeah.
Okay, so what you think, so can we maybe, would you be interested in having a product contractor to come in?
What am I have to do if something hasn't changed? Because if that flows.
Yeah, it's already there.
Okay, well, I see what you're saying.
And you're, and you're not alone in this, but I know of three other ones that the homeowner this year has already got somebody to come in and cut them. Because of the same situation.
See who it is and if he gets them all, it gets done cheaper.
I mean, I, any suggestions help, anything, I would appreciate it. I was always told that y'all, the county had an easement down to that lake, so that's not accurate.
It's not recorded anywhere, anywhere that we can find.
My granddad, okay.
And that's what we went through.
That's what we were looking for.
We went through all that title, we went through all that title work, trying to find that and couldn't.
Well, I know, I don't see it, but.
And sometimes you got an easement, you know, even though you just got an easement there, put up a gate, but we've got gates, we don't even have keys to. And you know, you got guys sitting out there waiting to go put.
Oh, I'm sorry, I get it.
Yeah. So you, would you be willing to reach out to those guys to get that number?
Well, that's what I say, I'll contact you, give me tomorrow and we'll sit down and I'll get you some of those, some of those numbers.
Okay, and then again, any paperwork you come across related to mine, the watershed specific one, I would appreciate it.
I'll get you, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, I'm holding you to a tour down there.
Call me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, you have anything? Lee, you have anything? Back to you, Ms. Corrigan.
I did, I sent y'all an email with this attachment that I would like y'all to consider putting it on the agenda, consent agenda meeting. And based on the revenue per square salary, I did this as, it's very similar to the St. Clair County proposal that was passed in March of 23. And you all know that, that a pay change for an elected official cannot happen until the next election cycle comes through. But this would be, it would be an actual expense account that would be the difference between what I'm asking for at that passing. And then it would be, it would be allowed to be given prior to that. So that's, that's what that legislation is, I think, y'all have some time to look over it when you get back with me on it. And I appreciate your attention, doesn't matter. It's, it's, it's kind of frustrating on my end to see everything go up, even, you know, even people in office have been getting raises and I'm still sitting there. So I'd appreciate it, thank you. And I meant to mention that, that, you know, this board had asked me to reach out to the tribe and we already started that, you know, talking to him on it and chat it up.
Go ahead.
Can you give him a copy of that, please?
No, I just got it.
I know, where?
Oh, I know where you put it, yeah, thank you.
Y'all have any questions? Yep. Tammy?
Sorry, I did not print you up anything, but it's been crazy Monday, our city clerk is out for a week, then she may be out for a couple of weeks. So y'all keep her in the grave or something, or her family. So I'm just gonna cover a couple of items, the most recent things I've been working on. I've been meeting with the Alabama Fiber Network, Emmett was on the first call with me. And we helped them locate the best place that we can for what they call as the fiber hut. This was the last, you know, we've been here for years, y'all know, you know, everybody's gonna get internet. Well, I think the state finally figured out it was just backwards, I mean, it just wasn't, these smaller companies could not afford to do that even with a certain amount of money. So this would be what they call as the middle mile. So this would be a fiber hut and ideally it's gonna be in Hefflin because of the way it runs. I think it ran from all the way nine, it comes on seventy-eight, goes up toward P line. So that would allow access for everyone in the county. Now, we did meet last week with Tuana Gibson to bring it before the board, for the hospital board. Because the best property that we have found is actually behind hospital board. Because you don't want it, so, I mean, it's not like it's really ugly, but it's not that pretty. It's like a forty-five fifty fenced in little, you know, metal building. So she had concerns, she had concerns that, you know, she didn't want to vote for something unless it benefited everyone in the county. And he did a very good job explaining that you have to be there first, you know, you have to make that step. You can't, without that step, you're not gonna be able to get, you know, to out in the county. So you've got to start somewhere and then there'll be another, you know, phase of money that comes in and that'll be up to the companies to get it out to the communities. But by what I understand, it's gonna be easier for those companies this next time, I hope. And it'll be something probably our communities will work with them to help them. So anyway, she's gonna bring it back, he's actually gonna go to the, to the hospital board meeting. So if that doesn't work out, you know, maybe reaching out to some of you to help me. They usually like to get a public, you know, something that's public, it's easier to deal with in private, private property.
The part about not being for something that don't help entire county, it's helping the entire county, right?
Right, right. And I think he did a good job explaining that, there's just no guarantee that once that hut, there's no guarantee that, you know, that Hollis is automatically gonna be getting it right then, you know, it's gonna be a process and it's gonna be up to, you know, companies once that does happen. But without that middle mile, probably none of it can happen, it's just gonna have to step that's gotta be taken.
Are they giving any timeframe for the other areas?
Not in this, not with what this guy does. Like I said, this is just one focus, this fifty-three point five million dollars that come out of the, you know, fifty-three point five million for the middle mile. So this will actually.
That's, that's putting, that's putting a dot on every county in the state of Alabama, is what I understand.
Right.
And then, and then from that, now, do they hit on down mine with it going further?
Down nine, then go seventy-eight.
Where's the next hub will be Clay County?
Right.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, is, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is a lot of people along that route, then you start branching off on that. But that's one hub, so I guess we just need to maybe, when we talk to him, is it is going down highway nine, it will go through Hollis Crossroads. And you see what I'm saying? So what they're saying is that, this is just a dot for Cleveland County, you only gonna get one dot. So it's either you want the dot or you don't want the dot. And to me, I want the dot in Cleveland County, I don't care if it's in Hollis, Fruithurst, or wherever, as long as it's in Cleveland County. That's almost a given to take the dot, we don't want to give up our dot. But what I'm saying is, there's gonna be a path along the way, I think it comes in from Georgia still.
Yeah.
And then it goes towards P line, you know, cuts up through that area. But then our dot will be in County C and then it's gonna head south down highway nine through the lower end of the county and all the way into Clay County.
Because before the companies were having, they were having to take care of expenses in the middle mile too. So now basically the state figured out, we got to help them get to that point because they can't, it was just, some people were still getting internet.
And to think of the intersection, man, it's already coming down seventy-eight, right? Or is it twenty?
It will hit seventy-eight.
Yeah, but I think we already got a line coming in that way, right? Lord?
You have a hub coming in seventy-eight.
So this year's gonna get us towards the south end of the county, which is a given, you know, when it goes to Clay County. So if whatever goes at Hollis Crossroads, to me, would be easy to make a tie-in there. If somebody wanted to go down there and invest some money and put a hub there for the school and for that, hopefully one day a municipality.
It's like the private that comes through now, it's just not feasible for homeowners, right, to be able to have it. Only businesses, right, because of the cost.
But anywhere along the line, other than that hub, if the county, if someone wanted to invest in Hollis Crossroads, they could, they could do a hub there too. Once you get the line run, because they just, what they're looking for is a place to run it all over the state. Then there'd be hubs branching off everywhere. But would we say a hub, that there's a fenced in area with a building, with a, with a, like a, it's just, they'll plug it in, they'll set it down.
The companies were having like a box inside that hub, they work with that, you know, company.
And then say like Gigabyte says, hey, I want to put me a box in there.
Well, see, it's like Gigabyte now works also with Harper's, the one that's running down seventy-eight now. Well, I would say again, it's just, you've got this secondary that has to get it to be like it affordable for the houses.
Right.
This, this is still gonna be for business.
No, this, this year's to put the hub, it could be for all of it. This one is, from what he taught, what he told us.
And I, and I'm not saying it's gonna guarantee that everybody's just gonna be able to, you know, it's still gonna be a process. You know, because this is just a phase, like everything else, but it is smarter than what they get in the very beginning.
I've seen so many county roads and along the interstate and everything dug up and orange pipe sticking up out of every intersection. I don't understand how the state got internet all over the block. I mean, everywhere you look, there's a pipe sticking up here, but nobody can afford it or buy it. And then they spend another mile, another swipe through here of starting all these hubs, well, all this. I think one thing like in, like in Clay County and, or Libley and Island, they got a lot of pipes already in the ground where they could go in and tie into that, run them a hub in there and tie into that and light all those houses up, houses. And then Gigabyte might look at this same company and branch off of what they're tied to for the city of Hefflin and go in and put their hub in there, which is gonna be a stronger signal, is the way I understand it.
And I would love to get, David did say he couldn't come this quick, but he did say he would come to a meeting and answer questions that I can't answer. You know, if you guys would like that, and he could kind of, because I didn't know to start with, this is just someone that's, we're gonna have ten people in here trying to build a hub and he said, no, they got the bid. It's not like you're gonna have a bunch of companies in here competing, they got the bid.
But they get the bid for Cleveland, they got the bid for Cleveland County, they got the bid for all those dots you're talking about in like a southern county.
But I will set that up and then he can have what, five minutes longer than me.
Well, if it's a work session, we got a little more time.
Okay, okay, but anyway, I'll do that because there's a lot of questions I can't answer. I just understand that this is one step that's gonna have to be taken, you know, for the county. I think I reported, I think I updated you guys on that I have been working with a, for quite a while now, a Southwire, it's a real repair company. We've showed them several places of land, they're still, you know, our competition is Georgia. But the land here is cheaper, they really want to be in Alabama, but it's just a money, a money thing right now. I did show them another piece of property the other day that I wasn't aware of, it was actually close to Southwire. I think they really liked it, I just had to put them in contact with the owner. So maybe we might be a little bit closer to getting that, there's not one here now, the closest one is Kentucky. So they're gonna come here or Carolyn either way, so you know, we're trying.
Are they on, are they on Hefflin side of the railroad track? They want on Hefflin side, you know, they want to be on the north side of the railroad track, the south side?
Yeah, ideally.
So what about that land out there behind the county jail that Casey's on?
I don't know, how much is that?
I thought it was under eighty, it was a good one.
And then also the county.
They said they're safe.
You know, Patrick Casey.
Sorry, okay, now I have not offered that.
But I can say, look at that area right there, because it gets pretty close to, you know, close to Southwater on the other side of it.
Right.
So, and the reason why I'm saying that, right there where we're building animal shelter, there's twenty something acres right there.
Right.
And then, and then, and I think that could be bought.
Yeah.
So that's the reason I just learned, because that, going out that road sixty-six, there's a forest sewer and water that goes out there. He said, I started on animal shelter, I didn't even know that.
Yeah, of course, we get, you know, we've got some land, which is brownfield, which I'm gonna try to get brownfield out there.
What about the land that, grew, grew up on?
On seventy-eight, we talked about that.
Yeah, that was a forest hillside on that property.
And of course, they don't have to do a ton of work, like everybody else, but I mean, we're Cleveland County.
But it's right at the end of a railroad spur. It's at the end, right there with old Mikey Land, the railroad spur comes right down there, I think my finger's two tracks up there.
Right, right there near the power lines there. And then also, you know, Southwire's looking for the future, they're looking for land, even though they've got a couple of hundred acres, they're still looking for future expansion. No, no, nothing else has been discussed except give us some options. And I have given them all the options, but kind of narrowed it down, you know, they're not buying process yet. But I think they're just thinking for the future and they of course want to be close to the interstate. I showed them several others that would have been great, but ideally they want to be as close, you know, a lot of them want to be right, right in between, you know, right off the interstate, right.
How much are they looking for?
On that project, I think one hundred.
I didn't need to talk with the.
I didn't remember this, but I think.
I'm talking to Patrick.
So anyway, that is, that is something, anything in the future, who knows, but that's just, they do have someone hired to be looking at sites. Ramberg, we have finally, finally got the last piece of what we needed for the survey. And so that was just today, I got the last piece for the official site layout. So I sent that to the attorney and he's gonna write up the legal description for the deed. And this is for the water tank, so hopefully when we get that, that should move along fairly quickly now. They have finally given that to us and then we'll get with the water board and hopefully we can get that tied down and they can get that money that was promised to them soon.
Will you send that update to Randy Price?
I've talked to him.
Okay, I bet you have.
Yeah, yeah, we've talked several times.
Is there, have they gotten any kind of preliminary of what it looks like, anything like that?
The water tank?
Yeah.
No, then I see, that's another thing, they, they had not even secured a contract or anything. So they couldn't give us the stuff that we needed, you know, they didn't even know how much land they needed to start with. Now, they may have secured someone within the past week, so no, I'm not, they haven't given me any drawings or anything.
How big, how big a tank is it? That's our sort of TV, it's gonna be.
It's just a tank.
I know, well, say, if it's not gonna be on the household then, you really won't see it as much as you would as like the ones that are around town.
What I, what I remembered, the plan was not written to be like a huge, like tower, it's more a tank than a tower.
More to the ground.
Yeah, not like.
It won't be as noticeable, is what I'm saying, you won't.
And I have got their stuff sent in.
A lot easier to think.
I've got their information sent in for, and I told Ramberg when I talked to him the last time, that tree ring would be back, requesting abatements again because they've got this, this project going on, so I'm gonna at least get that, you know, I've got it sent into the state and I'm at least gonna get that in the hands of, you know, so Ramberg will at least know it's coming. I mean, I've told them already, but, I know they didn't vote for the last one, but you know, maybe that can look at this.
You're talking about, they're looking for abatements because they're putting, because we've got a grant putting in a water hole?
No, this is their next.
They're about to build some more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is already large, this is their eighty thousand square foot.
Yeah, okay.
Expansion, so just trying to get ahead of it instead of behind it this time, trying to get ahead of it, so at least they can have time.
So the other base is running out, especially getting close to running out, right?
Should be getting close.
So then that money will come back in, they're not asking for additional abatements on what we already.
They're not asking, nothing is.
Only, only if it, I'm just saying, some of them we're gonna start paying.
Right, right, no, I, 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 I don't know, I don't agree how much the money's needed. But this just, they have to send in a questionnaire to the commerce and then that's where it starts the whole thing. So they're notified and then they'll send back information that shows us what they're eligible for. So sometimes they're not even eligible enough, so it just depends, so I think that's all.
Thursday, we're still on for Thursday?
Yes, plan, yes.
At five, right? Five o'clock? Seven at night?
In the morning.
Okay, I can make it seven, I can't.
No, that's Wednesday, that's Wednesday, we have a meeting this.
You might need to send that update down. Wednesday at five?
Wednesday at five, yes.
In the evening?
Yes. Not in the morning, you know better than that.
Oh, no.
I don't talk to anybody at five o'clock in the morning.
Crystal, you have anything? Mike Copeland, you have anything though? Lee, I think you have some folks here, I'll let you introduce them.
I do, y'all had asked me to look into the feasibility about the garbage and us getting trucks and that stuff. This is Jeff Martin, Jonathan Quinn, they're the ones that can put together that package for us, so.
You're welcome.
Yeah, well, if you made it, use it.
Right, so again, just wanted to go over some of the information that we've been going over with Lee regarding getting into a garbage collection system. And just to kind of recap, I think what we've done so far, you know, what we did is we provided this one page, which is on the right side of your folder. And what we try to do there is give you a very good estimate on the expenses associated with running a sanitation department. Now, this is by no means all encompassing, but in terms. Now, this is by no means all encompassing, but in terms of, you know, equipment, uh, the labor it takes to run that equipment, uh, fuel costs, equipment maintenance costs, uh, that we're very familiar with. And then any additional costs, which the only ones we have listed would be the tipping fees. Um, again, to try to give you on a monthly basis what those numbers look like. So you then can compare it to, you know, the rates being charged and so forth.
And the, and the cards. This includes the cards, too?
It does include the cards. Yeah, that's under the equipment section there, um, right below the process description. So, you know, we base, um, this on an estimated 4,000 households. Again, I don't know that that's going to be exactly right, but I think that's pretty close from, from what the discussions we've had with, with Lee. Um, and, you know, there's, there's sort of some industry standards that we use, which is 35 pounds per house per week. That's where we come up with the average tonnage. And so what we try to do is we try to work around a four day, what we would recommend is a four day work week. So that's how we size the trucks and determine the quantity of trucks, that sort of thing. So if you're doing a four day work week, you've got that extra day during the week, which really comes in handy on holiday weeks when you've got to kind of shift schedules around the 4th of July and Christmas and things like that. Gives you that extra day to move the schedules around and get that covered. Not to mention giving you a fifth day to do some maintenance and things like that. So that's the way, just to give you kind of an overall scope, that's the way we look at it. The way we tend to recommend, uh, things start out is, is a four day work week, okay, how many houses? What kind of tonnage is that? Where is the landfill? How far do we have to dump? So that's how we came up with really being able to do it with two, uh, what we call automated side loaders. And there are some pictures in the back. This is just an example of, um, a single axle, what we call a single axle automated side loader. That's extremely maneuverable, um, good on your roads because it's not a tandem, things like that. Um, but that gives you just an idea of what that, you know, it looks like. So, yes, sir.
Uh, on this truck here, uh, is it, so it grabs the can and dumps the can?
Exactly. So it's one man, one truck.
Inside the truck.
That's exactly right.
What is that truck running?
That truck right there, um, I've estimated it at $375,000.
So is that truck right there CDL? You got that CDL?
It is a CDL, correct. Yeah, once it, that's a, about a 49,000 GBW. So obviously anything about 26,000.
What's the yards of that truck as far as the?
You know, what's pictured there is actually probably a 20 or 22. Uh, what we've recommended is a 24 yard.
So 24 yard with dual wheels?
No, still single axle. The 24 yard is the largest body we can put on a single axle truck.
That's right, okay. I'm just trying to think about the.
Yeah. Now, that requires, you know, that, that 49 or 48,000 GBW type truck. So it's a 30 rear axle and about an 18 front. So that's plenty of chassis for that.
In a day, three trucks or two?
Two.
And then break it up over, and break it up, skate book over four days?
Correct. And the other equipment we have listed there is, is a backup.
Right.
Um, you know, you just.
That?
It's, it's going, no, that's actually a, an additional truck I have listed on the right side over there. Because that's a non-CDL, that's a, what we call a mini.
That's what City of Hefflin's got.
Yeah, that's what we call a mini.
But it'll flip the can from the back.
That's right. So it's a more manual type of, and what we recommend that for is any missed stops that occur during the day, you get a call, hey, you missed my can.
How much is that truck?
That one's about 175.
Right.
And it is, it does not require.
And that's the largest, because there's, there's, that's the largest capacity on the back, right? What is it, nine?
That's an eight yard.
Eight yard, yeah, eight or nine.
Um, you can get up, if you, if you're trying to stay under CDL, you can get up to a 13 yard.
Can I ask you, is that truck right there, is there a way that you can get one that's under CDL that would flip the can without you getting out of the truck?
We do. In fact, I think, um, you know, it's sitting outside, if you want to.
Well, I want to go look at it.
If you want, yeah. It is an under CDL side loader.
So what does it cost?
It's 16 yards. It's about 300.
Without, and don't have to have, uh, CDL?
Do not have that, yeah, correct. It's just, you know, you're going to run about, the 24 yard, you can pick up, you know, five, 600 cans before you have to go dump. Whereas the 16 yard, you know, you're going to run about half that. So two to 300.
So you dump at a different, you dump at a local site and then ship it out somewhere?
You'd either have to have the transfer station or you'd have to take it, go ahead and take each load to the, to the transfer station.
And that would take a lot more time, wouldn't it?
Right, and that's certainly one of the things to think about.
When the truck's full, it's full. So, uh, what, what, I'm just going by somebody that's just got into this. What they found out was is you wind up, you know, you got all these guys hanging out that's working on the truck. They spend all their time waiting in line to dump the truck. So if you can't, if you gotta spend a half a day, then you're going to have a bunch of stops that didn't get made. I don't know if you, if you're going to be able to get all of those in the truck. But, but to have a transfer, the, the city just got to building them a transfer station where they done the concrete wall and everything. Then go dump their truck. But I think they also said if they, if they get their load complete, if they just take it, if they got time, since the guys are working, the driver takes the truck on and dumps it and putting it in.
And that's really the way we sized the, you know, the two 24 yarders was, the thought was both guys would run a full route and just go dump at the end of the route.
Okay, so that's where you get there?
Right.
I think, but as long as you get all the cans.
Had the CDL.
But you're also trying to have a miss one, too.
Right, we, you know, I put it over here just because not everybody, you know, is going to go the extra mile, I think, and get this. But I think that's a great adder, you know, again, for missed stops. You might even have backdoor service, you know, on occasion for, you know, some elderly or disabled that you need to go up and get their can. And this, this truck can actually go up the driveway.
Yeah.
And get the can, so they don't have to bring it to the curb.
Or don't bring that in.
No, I just, you have to have, you know, the, the, you know, the writing, medical backing that, hey, we need to come and get it.
Well, I start getting from the kitchen to, hey, don't never stop.
Riding service.
But, um, so, you know, again, just looking, trying to give you a very solid monthly number. Um, you know, that, some of the things that Mike probably doesn't put aside, you need it.
Yeah. So the truck that's running now, it's just one truck, one route? Are they running two trucks? But that's a big truck.
It's two trucks, what, what they're running now is two trucks and it's still on a four day week, too.
But what I'm saying is, that's a big truck, that it's, it's a dual wheel truck that they run now.
No, it's a single axle. It's same, it's a single axle 24.
It's a lot bigger than that thing.
No, it's.
Okay.
It is, it is a different body style and all.
Well, this is, and this is a little bit smaller truck than even.
Than what you're talking about?
It looks just like it, it's just.
It's just bigger?
A little bigger, right.
But yeah, they're two trucks on a four day cycle.
Yeah, same, same style.
Well, then you know what they're hauling, what they're producing, so you know pretty much that's going to be.
And that's, it matches.
Okay.
It's all, it's all close.
Um, the, the other things that are, you know, included in the equipment of the, the truck itself is, uh, routing assistance. So there's software that, um, will create the routes that we need, um, if we want to, you know, purchase that option. It's, I, I've already estimated it in here, if it's something we, you know, feel like we don't need, we back out. But included in that is, is the routing with tablets that give the drivers turn by turn, which is good. Just in case, you know, when you have a guy lay out and somebody fresh needs to jump in the truck, you know, somebody didn't have to ride with him to show him the route. It will give him the route turn by turn. So somebody who's never seen it before.
And I'm not getting lost on this, but you know, when they come and they're trying to sell us the contract, are they going to do this and do that? One time when we talked to a guy, that, that all the customers would be on their route. So they know when they pull up that that bill's been paid and that customer's a real customer and there's a can there.
Yes.
Is that component?
It is. That's, that's, yeah, connected.
And then that way, he don't flip the can because, so if he goes down there and you go out and reach and grab that can, does it automatically click it off then, or does he just drive by and it clicks it off?
Uh, well, both. If, if, if that, if it doesn't see the arm move, the, the portal that your administrator or whoever can look at, it will show a red can. If he drives by that house without picking the can up, the GPS tracker will show a red garbage can. If he dumps it, it shows a green garbage can.
Okay. That's good to know because we have them driving down the road saying they dump them and the truck cans are running over. I'm just saying, not for us, but for.
Yeah. Not only is there kind of indicated on the GPS and the portal that you have access to, um, there's video. You know, so there's cameras all over this truck and it's taking pictures and recording video of those dumps as well.
Anything about that? Want to know?
Yes.
And I don't know how, how the billing is done now, but there is a billing component that's built into this estimator as well. Um, you know, so the driver has real time, you know, he knows, you know, the can may be there, but if they're late on their bill and you don't want them to pick it up, it'll indicate, don't pick this can up. Because there's a lot of expense being, you know, wasted when, you know, the old fix was, well, we go, we go get their can. We take their can back. And then they get caught up again, you got to take them their can. Then they get behind again and we go take their can back. Well, rather than doing all that, you just don't pick up their garbage. And usually that gets them caught up. But the, the point being, all of that information is pushed real time to the driver.
Not picking up any of my district, I just pulling it out.
Yeah. Any, Lee, anything that we need to touch on?
Yes. Did y'all want to see the, the vehicle?
I did, yeah.
All right, let's take a 10 minute break.
Yep.
You got what, look at the vehicle. Going back to, uh, Joyce, you're asking that yours, yours be put on as a resolution?
Yes, if I can get the resolution because that's why the legislative, the legislative package and then, and we'll have to do the advertising stuff in time before it's to be approved.
Is there anybody who, as a commissioner, would like for that to be made a resolution?
I first would need to run our country bill first. And, and we also need to, I need to talk to Randy because we, I've already approached him and Chad about the other.
Okay.
So what, what do we do about that?
Well, I mean, I think you have a little bit of time, but you don't have, you know, you can't pass anything until, until the spring.
Yeah, it's going to be, yeah, it'll be later to pass it, but the way that that's written, yeah, go ahead.
I don't see a problem with, uh, us putting it on new business because we can always move it to the following month. That way we'll have it and then that way everybody have time to review it. And then, uh, if Laura wants to take it, because this might be the exit, because we've really got to look at the sheriffs, too. I mean, there's two things that needs to be looked at.
You could possibly amend it.
And I, I'm thinking that we can just take that. That is, well, like I said, that's passed legislation, um, for St. Clair. Most of that is, there's one section there that may be a little different, but everything else is identical to, to pass, so.
Let's, let's.
So you're asking to put it on new business?
Let me say why, because you know how they do, how they get when we don't tell them what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So that gives Laura two weeks to get that to him, just tell him we put it on new business. And that way he'll know that we've discussed it and we ain't jumping, putting wagon ahead of the horse. Does that sound okay?
The other, the other, the other bill, the other legislation, it's my understanding that if you do get passed, you could not, it would not take place until the next election cycle.
The page cycle, that's right. But there is a, this is the exclusion part. It takes place immediately upon passing, is that, uh, expense, um.
Expense.
Yes, the expense side takes up and takes that into consideration now, immediately upon passing. And in equal, um, division until you're reelected and take over that next one. So you would actually be getting, you'd actually be getting the, um, the raise in what is considered an, uh, expense allowance.
But this is something that has passed.
Oh, yes. And it's in play in, in St. Clair County.
So what we would be doing is creating an expense account.
That's correct. It would make a difference of the two salaries.
It would be what we would be creating. So we would have the plants of the expense. But we also need to talk with Randy and Chad because I feel like that since I've already approached them, that they need to be included in this.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
I've been approaching them for a long time. I've been.
But, but also I know that they're going to want a unanimous, most likely from you guys, or at least a majority. So. So you're asking that.
They consider it this time.
You're asking to be put on new business.
Put it on new business.
Okay, all right. And I think I went through everybody. I didn't leave anybody out, did I? All right, Lisa?
Yes, um, I have had a franchise, uh, approached me from Charter Communications. They have spoken to me and sent over a franchise agreement. This is for, um, some fiber that would be put in, in the, in Ramberg and the surrounding area around Ramberg. It does kind of bleed over into some of the county at large. Um, what it says basically is, the reason for the franchise is that Charter will be building a 1.2 million dollar fiber broadband project in and around Ramberg that will connect 277 households and businesses. Their agreement that they would like for us to sign would allow them to use, basically use the Broadway to, um, install this and they are willing to pay 5% of all their subscriptions. Um, if it's inside the city, then we'll pay the city that 5%, if they're, if it's outside the city in the county at large, it would be sent to the county. So they're willing to pay 5% of their subscriptions.
So the city now goes out three miles. So anything within that three miles will just go to the city. See what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there for everybody.
And this is what he said. He said it's not a lot. It's not, it's not a big money thing. They were, it's a five, it's a 20 year agreement if they do that.
How many years?
20 years.
Wow.
Yes, 5%. He said there are a lot of franchises and a lot of other companies that do offer those percents like that agreements for using the Broadway and, and for the, for that purpose. But it's usually not as much as 5%. That's actually a, a pretty good size compared to what, what most do. Now, I don't have any background in that, so I can't really tell you. And most of it is in Ramberg. But he said that it would, what it would open the door to is expansion out beyond that, too. And if there were any expansions, of course, then some of that would be into.
Did he say it was going to be above ground or in ground?
He did not say. He says, he's talking about, I would think.
He ran, since he said right away.
Well, I don't mean in ground because it's right away, hanging from a pole. Because some of them are trying to get it tied in when it's above ground.
He did not say. Now, if they have more in this franchise agreement, I just received this, so, um, I've set it, you know, just, just a little bit. I don't have time to get into the detail of it.
Has Jason sent it?
Actually it says, under your own grant or the grantee shall likewise place its facilities underground. So it is underground.
Has Jason sent it?
On the corner.
I just got it. I mean, I don't have it on the, on the.
First, I thought they had sent it to our attorney, but him we do, but, okay.
Good boy.
Don't tell. Everybody's already passed it, but, I mean, as far as, that isn't a thing that we have to, it's just a.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, let him look at it and let Terry bring it to the table next week. Just put it on new business for Terry.
All right. So we're going to put it on new business?
Mm-hmm. Just, Terry might, you know, it takes one person, not both, on trying to go to new business anyway.
Yeah.
But Jason does make a review of it.
Yeah, because you have two weeks.
Three, it's.
Three weeks.
Yeah, three weeks this time.
You have anything else?
Um, so it's pretty much about me. I'm just working on the course, you know, I'm working on, I'm working on budgets. I'm working on year-end anticipated revenue and expense numbers. I have a dividend that I already put together. I'll have that to you soon. I will have the year-end numbers just for you to consider before you then have the rough draft of the budget that you will have before you get to here.
Okay. Lee?
I just need two spots on the agenda. We'll have to pass our county transportation plan. And then I will need a spot for approval and acceptance of maintenance bids.
Okay. Uh, you want those new business commissioner?
Yeah, we're going to say the, the list for transportation.
Same plan, right?
Which is split by.
Yeah, that's what I've, I've got, I've got, it's split. It ain't necessarily three ways. Emmett's got a project, so I got his backed out of it. Then I got the remainder of it split roughly the same, just based on how the projects lay out. So basically each committee, y'all will all get one, one sizable project is what it, what it works out to be.
Okay, any questions for Lee? Right, both of those are new business, good?
Lady, where are we at? Have we started doing any asphalting?
The tar and gravel, we're starting in, starting in the morning. So.
And which end?
We're gonna put the first layer on the post office road and on the ones behind the junction. So we'll do first layer, first layer down tomorrow on both of them. Quick as they swap out tanks, we'll go with a second later, next day or two. So those will, those should be finished up this week.
Um, I think I included you and you both on that text about, uh, update repair and repay the 94203?
That's one of them. We just figure out, I mean, I've got it on Laura's list to discuss. Let's just figure out what we.
Know about it and all of that. The upcoming, as far as board and mountain, that's, that's gonna be on one of the new projects for next year, correct?
That's where you're gonna have to make a decision though.
Well, true.
And then this, uh, he's asking about a po- uh, pothole on Second Bridge. Give us a taste.
We'll fix pothole.
Okay.
Second, no, oh, Second Bridge, that's closed.
That's, it's not.
He, he's talking about the 10 ton. He's, he's talking about something right around there. So I'll just have to lay eyes on it.
The, the 104, y'all call it the second bridge. I thought it's, it's really, it's a third bridge, isn't it?
We call, I always call it the railroad bridge, but they both are considered the railroad bridge. But the only bridge that's in use.
There you go.
So do we know what road it's on? Since it's all these dead lanes, because I wouldn't know. Is there a go?
It possibly is, but I know exactly where he's talking about.
Okay. I'd just like to know, okay, someday I wanna go up there and look at it. Y'all don't have any, up there in the north end of the county, y'all don't have any sign that says?
It's beautiful up there.
We'll put that sign on.
You need to go up and look at it. I promise you.
Laura, how would I ever figure out how to get there? Somebody will have to take you and put it in the barn.
All right, uh, I just wanted to mention that because it hit me up. You were aware of, I wish you'd called Mr. Allison and talked to him.
I, I will. I, I don't have their number.
I'll give it to you. I'll be happy to share it with you.
Help call me.
All right, any other questions for Lee? All right, moving on to discussion items or as far as you guys, is there any resolutions that you want to put in place?
I need to, I need $5,500 about my discretionary. I need to go towards, uh, Freedom's Elementary School for gravel, uh, for the playground areas, pea gravel.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Everybody, is that, is that good, uh, for, uh, consent agenda? You think? Everybody good with that consent agenda? Miss Scott?
Okay.
Your fine.
That's what we're actually doing.
All right.
Uh, at the, at the farmer's market and the chamber of commerce, we got a water problem down there and we're doing some handicap, uh, sidewalks and a parking place to get to the farmer's market. So I'm gonna allocate, uh, $5,000 to help with that. And also, uh, Roger's gonna.
2,500.
2,500 to help with that. So, uh, that's what, uh, discretionary funds.
So it'd be basically to the chamber?
Correct. Well, I think too, uh, I, the way I've been doing it is, is like the concrete and stuff like that, I just order it and then we just take it right out. I think most of our money can be used up that way. And then that way I don't really have to.
Pay directly too, though.
He can direct, see, well, I'll do a PO and then I'll order the concrete because I work deals.
Is it right? Everybody good with that on consent?
Uh, on the pea gravel, do they need to build, do we need to have Wales send us a bill for it? Or do we need to go just send the check to the school?
Either way will work. As long as we have a resolution to back that and it's clear what it's being used for, you can either go to the vendor or you can go to the.
You know, J. Tom.
Yeah, what, what's been talking about it, I just.
Well, if you do it this way, you do a PO, you need to get, uh, Jerry Ho, he'll haul it and he'll build the county.
Yeah, they.
Or, I don't know how big a load they need.
That's what they're working on now, is trying to use this little truck, the biggest truck they can get in there. They're having to move the gate because it was gonna cost so much for those small trucks.
Well, the 750 right now for, you probably get a load of gra- a load of pea gravel for seven. I, I don't know how much you need. That's about 23 tons.
J. Tom, they had, it has to be so many inches. And that's not gonna be enough for them, but that's all I can do.
How much money you got?
They, they need, it's gonna be a little over $10,000.
But how much money you got to buy gravel with? How much money do you get just yet?
We're gonna make 55 workers right now.
Okay, well, I'm just saying you can get 20 something tons of gravel. And then you can take and do whatever you want to. But that's a lot, that'd be a lot of pea gravel, I'm telling you. I have one, that's what I did over at the elementary school here.
How much was the 20 ton cost?
750. And if you're called running and talk, might get a hundred dollars so cheaper. I don't know how much you give him. Them little trucks that comes from across from Wales, I'm just saying, do what you want to do. I'm just saying, when I get through with a load of gravel, you gotta load.
Y'all, y'all work this, y'all work this.
I'm just trying to, yeah, keep moving.
Anything else you want on the consent agenda or new business?
Um, no, but I do have something that I do want to bring up to the commission. Um, because of different issues that's been, that we've seen happen in the last couple of weeks. Uh, I think that I would, that it would be a good thing if we bring someone in here as a subcontract to help Lisa and, um, our new financial officer to come in and train, do some more training and evaluation. Um, I think we need to be looking for somebody. And, uh, what, how do y'all feel about that?
Well, I think I would, looking for somebody, I think you gotta sort of look at it as a CPA firm.
Well, I'm talking about.
Or, or an individual that if you can find somebody like that. But, uh, I think, I think you need.
The government back, background.
Yeah.
Or a CPO that can come in here and help to kind of smooth things out, do some training.
Well, I think to make sure that, you know, it'd be, uh, well, I know Lisa knows and she probably can, uh, the one that does, uh, the, uh, Clay County, I'll just tell you, the one that does Clay County and Randolph County's, uh, Gasty and their finances, I think they do Clay County's financing and the Gasty. And it's a CPA firm. And they are up to the, you know, up to what you need and however much you need as far as when they're putting it together. But I think they perform the Gasty, they put it together for them. Become the one that I've talked.
Let me just.
I talked with them, but I just talked when I was talking.
Maybe to commissioner, they need to get together and do some research and find someone or find a firm that can come in and do that and get with our check.
Do you want, do you need something on the resolution? I mean, if y'all were gonna do as a commission, you can, you got the authority to go do, to go seek out a service.
Right, just right now, seek out the service. And then if we find one.
Then you can find out the cost and then decide.
And then decide on it. That, that can come in here and do some training. I feel like we need it. Um, yeah.
Well, um.
Okay.
As long as it's two of you.
Let me ask you this, uh, you might.
No more than two.
Window, if you, if you don't get a CPA firm, stock's finished, uh, the.
Do you wanna work with me on that?
Sure.
Okay.
Y'all two gonna go seek that. So we don't need resolution, right? For the time being?
Resolution until we find someone and then we'll bring it.
Okay.
We'll have to talk with the attorney.
I'm sure there'll be a servicing agreement, service agreement. All right.
So in the circle of us, okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
All right, anything else y'all wanna add to the agenda? All right, so now tell me this, y'all are going to comforts on when? Which week? The third week, 19th, week of the 19th?
Are you not?
19. 19.
I'm not there with the ACCA conference. I'm always, that's the topic here for, I'm gonna be deep in budgets.
Okay.
And I'm going to the IAC meeting.
Operations Council meeting.
On Thursday. Um, so I'll be driving down and coming back that evening. So in Montgomery, I think it's at the Embassy Suites this time.
That's right.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
I wanna throw something at you. And I mentioned this, uh, months ago, but, uh, why can't, why can't not the county have a good webpage with all the information on, on that one site, you know? I've had people, two times the last couple of weeks, people call me and said, I can't find this and I can't find that. And stuff, you know, scattered everywhere. And if you, if you go looking, you know, everybody's got their little deal on Facebook, you know? The sheriff's got one, Crystal name's got one. Everybody's got one, you know? And I'm just saying.
Are you saying a website or a Facebook page?
Why don't we build a website or have one built and put everything on it?
It, there is.
Right here, yeah. Yeah, talk to me.
Sorry to talk to you on that, because I think I remember I was, uh, in on the discussion about getting the minute books on the website, correct? So we sought out a vendor that could do that off the statement list. And what we found is no one would commit to that because it's such a big project. But they did, however, recommend a specific type of scanner that, um, that we can purchase ourselves and we can do it ourselves. But as far as the, um, county website, I believe Krista is in charge of it and it's department by department. But as far as the minute books, now I do believe the, um, agendas and stuff were posted by month, um, on there. But the resolutions themselves, um, the group resolutions are not on there for the minute books. But, um, I wanna say it was about $3,000 for the, the type of scanner that was needed because it had to be a large format and, um, all of that. So.
So you seen this before?
Yeah, you seen this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't seen it? And it's got all the offices.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen that.
But you think we need to bet?
I do.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just wanna try, I just wanna make sure you had seen that.
Do, do you feel like we could add to this?
You need to add.
It's possible if you knew, if we knew how, you know?
I think what he wanted, if I recall, Mr. Hill, are you correct me if I'm wrong? I think what you wanted is like a search type bar that you could search for specific type of resolutions, correct? That you would want to be able to search it and find exactly.
That, that's a different subject. I'm, I'm thinking right now, this is just about having current information available to people, you know? Go to one site and there it is. Yeah, there's your announcement, Joyce's announcement. Leave. It may not even be possible. Well, it is possible, but it may not be something you want to do.
The biggest thing I see is it being updated more recent. I don't think it gets updated enough once we do.
Can I defend them on that? That they only update what we sent to them. I mean, Krista immediately jumps on it. What I fail to do on my end, um, Commissioner Hill, is sometimes I fail to get on there and look at it because I work in the office. I don't really look at the webpage. But it has the capabilities already to connect. Like I have my payment website that's hooked into that site. So if they click on my page, they're gonna see pay property taxes. Click on that, it's gonna carry you to the page. So we have some of those capabilities, but I think the updating it more recent is on the administrators for each one of those accounts to say, hey, we want that updated or we, we need that updated.
So on the.
And I agree with you.
On ours, when you pull it up, here's the commission, each district, how to get in touch with them. Also the budget, the minutes, the audits, all those are on there. Need to get some more audits on there. But, uh, then you just go back to the next department, which is Joyce's or, but I, it would, so one of the things, there's things that are going on in the county on that website would be nice if, so if somebody outside the county circle contacts the commission, like the city of Heaven or city of Ramburn that has events going on, especially on their Facebook page. A lot of times I just tag it and comment and add it, you know, and it, it goes from there. So.
Randolph County, let me even have a potter to show people where all their tax money goes, you know? That'd be great to have.
If you just want a knowledge where the people can know, which that comes from your office, right? Well, I mean, the money that you get will come from me and I'd be happy to just put the abstracts out there. That's easy. I mean, you know, the abstracts for the future and then I can actually put the actual for the past. Of course, you know, we collect in the rear. So, you know, I could go ahead and tell you what we collected for 2023 and that would be easy. I can put a link in there for you to see that. That's not a big deal.
But you're, you're wanting something, or what you're thinking is like.
Yeah, that would be.
Well, our budget, are, are you saying you want?
Where our budget is.
The, the, the budget is, is posted on there, but what about the, uh, are you thinking maybe the A and E reports?
I need to look that up.
Okay.
Um, all right, so.
Just think about it. See how we can improve it to where, where anyone can, don't want to do a Facebook page, you can find out what's going on.
Okay. Um.
I just have a question for Lisa. Lisa, did you ever get in touch with LMS and get that, get our, the internet? Is it LMS? Yeah, LMS. Our contract?
One.
One minute, am I saying it wrong?
That contract's been taken care of.
Did we get any of the money back?
We still get money back. We were only overcharged, I think, one month on ours here in the office.
Okay, the, the, so you were.
I got one question to her.
Did we release right that mail to where it was, where it was at?
So when we backed down, so what, what, I guess, or just at some point, give me a total or all of us a total of what we're actually paying now, um, I think, because that was one of the things that we were trying to give a partner's associate was the money that we were paying on our internet. And we couldn't because it wasn't an accurate figure.
Okay.
Emmett?
Yeah. The, uh, I talked with Lee about what me and you talked about on the road. So Lee had, I mean, she has the numbers up to the 140. I'm gonna put it for you, okay? So, uh, uh, some of it, she ain't gotta do nothing, but she'll just write a check for it out of the general fund. But the other money is tied into 56,000 is tied into.
It's part of the LAT CF money. So we'll have to have a resolution from the IAC on it. So we'll have to have the description of what that is.
And she said just put it.
On 114, 114 is what.
And she said just put material.
Okay.
Cause all, all, our money's just going for material anyway.
Okay.
That's all I've got right there.
Uh, meeting moved to the 26th. We'll have, post that in the, in the next coming weeks. Our meeting will be on 26th at four, starting at 4:30. That would be the 911 and then also our regular meeting at 5:00.
Uh, Lisa, uh, Emmett's not here today, but, uh, will you, uh, make sure, and, and I don't think that we have to do a resolution for everything we asked for, but for several months I had asked for cunk time to be sent out. And, and I forget, and I guess, I don't know if there's a reminder, but she says that she's gonna start sending it out now, I guess. So, uh, uh, but just to ask in a, in a formal meeting. uh, but just to ask in a, in a formal meeting, two or three times, I think, if, if we, if we got, every time we ask for something, if we gotta do a resolution, I just need to know. And I'll get y'all to write up the resolution for it.
I, um, I know that Ms. Cobb had asked for it at some point in time, I think a year ago, right? It's probably been long. And I know that Emmett does provide it a lot, and I was trying to, kind of giving her a message or remind her that that was something that was needed. But at the end of the day, it's not really my, you know, not really, to me, I have to tell her every time to do something. If I just, I just provide her a few times. To get her to, to remember to do it. 'Cause I know when something needs, sometimes it is a, you know, something to remember to do that. But I did not realize that she had not, that she had stopped providing them. 'Cause the last couple of times I had asked her, she said she had emailed it out the last.
Well, I reminded her a couple of times, I said, and she says, I'm sorry, but then when the month passes, I still don't get it.
You know, we've got to.
I'll just add it to mine.
We have a policy book that dictates that. That comp time, we can't, we, we've got to abide by what we've got on our.
Well, let's just ask a couple of questions about it. So when comp time is, uh, applied, so let's say that an employee works, I'm talking about any employee, whether they're you or Emily or any employee. Each pay period, the type, the comp time needs to be turned in at that payroll, each payroll, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the, that's the employee's obligation.
Needs to turn in that time.
Okay.
However, one caveat is, I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding at some point in time where if someone was capped out, if they were not paid out by the end of that fiscal year, then if they did not know that they, at that point in time, were supposed to either cash that out or use that time, then they may not have turned in their time if they knew they were already capped out. Because if you, if you're already capped out, it's not really that point in time, the point of putting in that time. So I think that that was something that was happening for a while. Like, Emily wouldn't know that there was comp time that was being turned in, but it wasn't being put in the system because they were already capped out at 80. But they really shouldn't have been because they started a new, new year. It should've been a clean slate at that point in time and they could've accrued any more comp time.
So, so, who's Emmett's not here? So what day on comp time and in the universe is the day that all the comp times will be cashed out? I don't care if you got it in 5:00.
It'd be at the end of fiscal year.
So no comp time. Zero, in other words, everybody's time goes to zero at the end of each year.
On the comp, yes.
I was gonna say, so how do you?
That's what I understand from Emily now.
So how do, how, how do you miss, as many times as I'm asked, and, and we're talking seven months, so that gets us on back there. How do we miss everything? When you look at that comp time sheet, and I think I got one at the house that's been since this year started. Uh, and there was a question, I think, that was brought up on comp time, 'cause I think yours was maxed out. And I think Ms. Cobb brought that up then, and the reason why we wondered, if we know when that special day is, whatever that special day is, 'cause I don't think nobody knows. But I'm just thinking, there is that. So if it, so that day, everybody, so is, does the employee know on their check or somewhere noted that employee knows, okay? Emmett, your comp time is zero, so I will look on my check. And so that employee knows that he might, I just say maybe there might be a spot on the check, so that employee knows that they have built up 40 or 50 hours. So maybe they got somewhere they might wanna go and is it September, October, November that they say that they got this comp time? 'Cause a lot of times, to my understanding, this comp time also can be used for vacation or taking time off. Because I wanna see a place in the budget this year uh, for how we're gonna handle comp time. Because if, if the commission don't never know, we don't never know, we don't never know what our budget's gonna be. Are we gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on comp time? Or we're gonna spend, you know, so, so when, so when we close out the end of the year, say that we got money left over in those departments. That money, whether it's the sheriff's department, or Joyce's, or yours, that comp time should go to whatever it took to run that department. So when you say you got a carryover that year, that carryover don't work until that's right here, that special day. Whatever that special day is, so if it's January 1 or September, October, I just wanna find out what that day is so we can say, okay, we got in, uh, 10, 20,000 dollars worth of comp time in this department, or 5,000 dollars or 2,000 dollars. Well, that, that there also goes towards negativity on what their carryover is.
Well, it's supposed to, it's gotta zero out at the end of the year.
But you gotta figure out what day it's zeroing out, so, 'cause the employee, to say it's up for the employee to know, how the heck does the employee know if they don't never see that zero?
Well.
And we might need to have any.
I don't know whether it is or is not on the paste up, I don't think that it is. But I do know that on the web time sheets, it does show on there, you have that accessible. It will tell you how much vacation time and how many comp, how much comp time you have built up, set time, it shows those.
On what sheet?
Where, where you log into Floyd Web's sheet and put your time in, yeah. It does show it on there.
So every employee knows then that they, they either gotta cash it in or they lose it.
Let me ask you this, does it show, uh, a clock or a date or sparkle or something that says, okay, this is the day that it's over, when it goes to zero? So that employee knows, okay, I got eight hours left over?
I don't know how it's supposed to work, but I can tell you how it does work.
Okay.
'Cause, you know, I can't get over time, it's like that comp time. Years and years ago, it was cashed out, if there was any there, at the end of the fiscal year, the last pay period of the fiscal year, cashed out.
And that's in September.
And now it's actually money.
Yes.
It was actually money then.
It was money. We got lines in our budget for comp time cash out or whatever. But then y'all voted to take all those lines out of the budgets. So there's been no more money since then. So, and I do have some hours, I'll, I'll keep about a week's worth, I guess, in there, whatever. And this has rolled over, it hasn't been cashed out, 'cause they ain't gonna line up where to cash it out from. So it just runs over from year to year.
But it's earned time, so technically that should be paid out. I don't think you're not, I think the commission's obligated to pay it out at the end of the year if the comp time has not been used. What Emily was telling me, she was saying that it's, what the handbook says is that you encourage your employees, if they have built up comp time, to take that time before the end of the fiscal year, if that is not feasible. And it's not sometimes in the case of special department heads or, you know, whatever, whatever.
Let me see where, let me see where I'm going with this. I'm not going against the law.
I know.
And so I, I, I love the policy procedure handbook, and just thought you'd pass it here, might not make it legal. So, what I'm, that's the reason why when Laura's talking about bringing somebody in, a CPA firm that is, that knows and can tell us what we need to be doing, needs to look at that. That's the reason why I really think that we need to look at that to come in and say, and that's the reason why I asked, when I, I just got wind of it. So when she told me, and I seen it and I read it, and I'm like, well, because we know we're running into another issue, but I'm sorry. I'm sorry doesn't pay the bill, I'm just gonna tell you, they turn the lights off. And, uh, so what I'm saying is, is if you let something go past, it's hard to go back and the county government pay it. Because then they'll be looking for maybe Emmett that is broke and don't have no money, they might want him to pay it. So that's the reason why I asked Emily when I seen it, I said, you need to look at, look out to our auditors and make sure that we're doing this correct. Don't just put a note in there, because if you don't know, you can put the note in there that Santa Claus, Lee Houston Cole, or, uh, whatever. So I just, I just wanna make sure when we start running into these problems, that we address the problem and we don't correct the problem illegally. Correct, Ms. Cobb?
Because, yeah, because we, you know, we made a resolution that, that they had to take it, that we zeroed it out.
Yeah, well, we're great saying that they enjoy life with their family.
We had all this money building up and we were having to hold money over here. And, and we, it was a never-ending story. And of course, I know, like, like with the sheriff, they have, they get a lot of comp time and all. But, you know, our goal too is bringing somebody in here to eliminate a lot of our administrator and all of them having to work on the weekend. We don't want that. We want, you know, I think that we should be able to get up, be able to run our office in a, a timely manner. And we're getting all this comp time and they're being carried over, that's just one thing. And it took so long to get it, and this is not the only thing. You know, I look at our A and P reports, we've got some that are 175% over. Why is that? I mean, or the department heads, y'all not questioning those? Why are you so over? I mean, even, even like in administration, we're way over budget in training. Why? You know, these are things that we need to be questioned and we're not, we just kinda let it go, let it go. And we gotta stop. That's our job, is to make sure the finances of this county, county is handled right. And I think we need it handled.
Well, I think that, you know, it's been discussed many times that, you know, we had some, things that we lacked in the admin office. And I think we've gone, the commission has allowed us to make big strides toward that. And I think that, you know, six weeks into that new situation is not really a good, um, field for how it's gonna be, once the things are suddenly, and training's been done. And, you know, you've kinda shifted the, the jobs around as they need to be shifted around. I can already see improvements in how much that we are able to accomplish just in that short period of time. And I think that's only gonna get better. And also you look at what time of year we're talking about, we're talking about Augusts and September, so July, August, September. Of course, that's a very busy time for us typically anyway. Even if there were no comp time being used, like for my office during the break, any other part of the year, this part of the year would be the time you would, you would have that happen. And I would still expect it to happen occasionally, but not on a regular basis. And I'm with you, I wish that it was, you know, everybody comes to work, they're in their 40-hour week job, they go home, they don't think about the county at all, all weekend. And then come back to work on Monday and start working on county stuff again. But we're not there yet, I can foresee, I can, I can actually, I've said it a number of times in the last, you know, six, eight weeks, I've seen a lot of end of the tunnel finally, because I can see that we actually have in place what we've been needing in place all along. Um, I actually spoke to two of the commissioners, um, Friday for last, and I said, I think in a month, I'm gonna see a huge difference in where I'm at. And also by the end of the calendar year, I think I'm gonna see an even bigger one. So I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is at this point in time, that with the help that I get from Melissa and then with what I have learned, and then also I have a lot of training materials, I just have not had time to go through what time I have on in my schedule. I think we'll get there and I think we'll get there a lot faster than we think we will. Also, just not knocking the CPA firm that you're specifically speaking of, or, and I know there are others available. That one, I don't know what the issue was, but I do know a county that they do, do services for. And I know they had to have two compliance audits, because they were so far behind. And I don't know if that was anything to do with the county or if that was to do with the CPA firm. So that's just one thing to consider.
I think, you know, we'll do our research and make sure we find a good.
Right.
We just wanna make sure, especially, you know, we're, we're coming up on our audit. And, um, we're gonna make sure it's, you know, everything, that we give you all the tools that you need. Uh, that Tracy has all the tools he needs, Emily has all the tools she needs. We just, we need someone in here to kinda review and look at things and help out a little. It's just that we, we, no, well, passed, yes.
What?
What? What are you saying?
She said, she said replacement for Melissa, I said it passed with, you know, it's.
Oh, no. Well, I, I, I think what, what, I, I think is, is, uh, like with CPA firms, you, it wouldn't, they wouldn't work for us. They would work, I mean, they would work through the commission, but if you needed, if you needed your Gasty done. I mean, I'm just saying. This here's another source that, that, and.
It's a tool, it's a tool.
If you need, say, if you got a question or, or an answer or something that you need, they would, they, it's, it's a wide range of what they're doing. The only thing that I'm reading through is stuff that I've Googled online. Whenever time we talk about CPA, if somebody, if you can't get somebody to spend the time to come and, and get everything caught up, then the only thing we know to do is, is give you an opportunity to have somebody else. One of the things with, uh, Emily that has spoke, when I spoke with her months ago, that she said that, uh, she would like to have somebody that understands, not her depth, to help with some training in her office. So who would you find? And, you know, the, we don't have anybody, unless you find, have somebody that is a CPA firm, that is licensed and trained to do it, that will put their name on it to come in. If she want, and I'm not just talking for you, I'm talking about for Emily Brown, to be able to have that person to come in and say, and they can look at her and say, Emily, all you need to do is, in other words, that's just what I'm.
We need, we need a way of knowing how to, to catch these contracts and how, you know, there's just things there that's gonna take a while. I mean, because it's, we've had, we've had issues. And so we need to try to eliminate these issues, but I, I think it's just a tool to help.
Right now, we could, this month's gonna be gone, so, uh, Lisa's working towards her goal of what she's gotta get complete, so. When you spend some time.
Chris's audit was finished, correct?
As far as I know, it's done, I've not heard anything from Randy since.
It, it, uh.
I mean, I provided everything to her that she has asked for, and then she stopped asking for, for information, so I figured she's done with us.
So everything was, everything was good with her.
She gave me no complaints whatsoever, she asked us for information, we provided it, and they don't give you anything back whatsoever. Good, bad, ugly, I mean, I guess there would be more questions if they were having trouble. But.
Everything was balanced.
That they get, oh, yeah.
So we're gonna meet on the 26th.
Yes, sir.
Go right quick, what, what's on new business and consent agenda?
New business, um, the revenue commission expense account, uh, franchise agreement with Charter, the county transportation plan, and the county maintenance bids.
Do you need to look at that as far as the right ways, what the hell they're doing down somewhere right now?
So we've got a.
That's consent agenda.
I'm three miles out still, see you. But I just don't wanna be tearing up our roofers.
We got a policy in place that says back five foot, so.
Okay.
That was all new things. Consent agenda is, uh, most Laura's discretionary money for the pig gravel, for, for scare elimination, 5,500. Uh, Emmett wanted, uh, 5,000 of his discretionary for the farmers market to work on the sidewalk, the handicap sidewalks. Um, and Roger also is gonna contribute 2,500 of his discretionary there for the side project.
Everybody good?
Good.
Alright, that concludes our meeting.